Good evening. I'd like to call the Maysville Board of Commissioners Thursday, May the 11th to order. We will begin with the immigration and governance.
Gracious Father, we begin with a moment of silence as we pause for the men and women, for our firefighters and for our law enforcement that have paid the ultimate sacrifice for our Father, we are grateful for our country. We're grateful for our community. We are grateful for men and women that serve and protect and are there to better our communities. We ask your blessings to be poured out upon them all. And as we are gathered here this evening to conduct this business, we pray that everything would be done to your glory and for the benefit of this community. It's in Christ's name that we do pray.
Thank you, Reverend.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am.
City Manager Wallingford?
Here.
City Attorney Cottle?
Here.
Controller Stanfield?
Here.
Project Coordinator Hord?
Here.
Public Works Director Trusdale?
Here.
Police Chief Palmer?
Here.
Fire Chief Doyle?
Here.
Utility Manager Julian?
Here.
Zoning Administrator Larger?
Here.
Building Inspector Fawcett?
Yes, ma'am.
Codes Officer Brooks?
Here.
Tourism Director Bailey?
Here.
Main Street Director Reese?
Here.
Thank you, Lisa. Minutes of the April 13, 26, 27, and May 3rd meetings and department Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to thank the department chairs for the details that have come in the reports. It's very helpful to have, and so I appreciate the time and effort that you guys put into those reports. Public announcements. I'd like to start by congratulating the Maysville Police Department, Chief Palmer and Tony for his speech today. It was a very inspirational service and a great example of appreciation honoring those who served today, take the risk, and those that we have lost. Trooper Blake Trivie and Officer Danny Hayes. So, thank you guys. Well done. Any other public announcements?
I've got one. Just to remind everybody, next week, Maysville is hosting the Kentucky Heritage Council as well as the Kentucky Main Street Program. They're having a dual conference here. Not been done before, and they picked Maysville to do it. So, good for us. There are all sorts of activities, if you like, hearing about preservation and how towns grow. Things are at the Cox Building most of the time on Wednesday and Thursday, and then there's a program at the Opera Theater on Tuesday evening, and all of that stuff is open to the public. So, we are honored to have both of those entities come and want to be here.
Thank you, Caroline. And then, public comment, Brian?
Get closer to the mic, Brian, if you don't care. Thank you.
At 3:00, I sort of talked about it a little bit, and I'd like to reiterate that it looks like we may be nearing a change to the typical ban to vicious animals, which is totally my wishes. And earlier I talked about, there are people waiting, unfortunately, some people waiting in the wings for this to exploit pit bull puppies or bully puppies or whatever. I've seen them on Facebook talking about it. You know, it's not, I'm not the police, and I'm not saying everybody here is or anything, but I would just like to throw something out for maybe if we could have a future ordinance or ponder on it, entertain it about breeding, because it looks like we have an abundance of dogs. There's actually a movement around here. We're getting dogs out of Mason County. It's like an Underground Railroad. I swear to you, going Ohio, Pennsylvania, everywhere, we're getting dogs out of here. I think it's a shame. Why are we throwing dogs out of Maysville, Mason County? Because there's too many. You know, we're trying, the animal shelters trying not to put them euthanized, put them down, trying to be a no kill. So, and we're trying to spay a minute or as many as we can, but if people are breeding, two and three litters a year, and those dogs are breeding, you know, there's money in it. So, I don't know if it's possible for any other cities or counties that are doing a, you know, hippie breeding, all these animals. If we, nobody's gonna let me go to Louisiana and bring back alligators, breed them and put them out in Sweden. And you can get away from an alligator easier than a dog, you know. And so, I'm just, I mean, sometimes we get hurt, dogs are fighting, or hitting the cats, or eating the cats, whatever. My dogs don't like cats. I keep them in a fenced-in area. I just think this breeding, this animal trafficking, and it make, probably not a KRS4 yet, but to me, it's cheap. I just think selling dogs, I don't know, I mean, Arizona made a law that pet stores have to sell rescues only instead of just capitalizing on animals and their suffering. Because we're seeing pure breeds in the animal shelter, too. They're bringing in golden doodles and everything else in the animal shelter, and it's an impossible situation without euthanasia. Nobody wants to see a dog cut down. But if we're pumping them out for money, if you get $10,000 on a litter, I mean, it's attractive if people want to do that. But they're already, they're mouthwatering already. And I'm not trying to hurt the animals by saying that. Pit bulls are special. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have something I'd like to say. I addressed a month ago, an incident that we had here, which is unfortunate, but we have members of county law enforcement here, and I, and I think there'll be other members of the commission that would like to address this. On the front page of the paper, it was City of Maysville, best small town in the South. A week later, it's City of Maysville supports cop fight, or cop fighters. We do not, or I do not, I support law enforcement in our city manager form of government. The council, commission makes the laws, and we, anything that goes out on our leather, letterhead must be approved. Anything that goes on the city website or city, we vote on anything, on any policy, any policy decision. To me, this was a policy decision. I think it was wrong, and we support the sheriff and the Maysville Police in this matter. Thank you.
I'll speak up, too, because I always support our local police department and our sheriff's department. Sometimes, to me, right is right and wrong. So, I support and do support our local sheriff's and police department.
I think the support of the sheriff, Mason County Sheriff's Office, and Maysville City Police goes without saying. Just an unfortunate incident that happened in Mason County, and lack of, in the letter itself, made it appear that the support of the individual that was charged came from a governing body. And I'm not sure if that was intended or not, but I had some, and I'm, everybody knows me, and I like to kid, kid and toy me, too, but I had some other health practice directors call, and after seeing that in the Herald Leader, and they were just teasing and tormenting me, but I didn't give it much thought. I have to agree that anything controversy at that level should, should be well thought out before anything is issued. That's just my opinion.
I was asked that, Ms. Walling. I was. Anything else? Reappointment, Mike Glass to the Fleming-Mason Airport Board, determine expires 5/31/27. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am.
Intergovernmental Transfer Event Center plates.
You're on.
We have a surplus of items from the event centers downtown that we own, and we let D and D Catering rent from us while they were open. Those are all in the Cox Building, and we do not have enough room to keep them, nor do we have a use for them. So, we were looking to do a surplus sale this summer of those items, including chairs, tables, coffee mugs, bowls, plates. Chef Patrick with the Maysville Culinary School has shown an interest in the large dinner plates. There's about 149 of them, and they would like to use them when they're open at their college cafe during the school year. I don't really know what the, you know, resale cost on used large plates are, but I would guess maybe a dollar apiece, $149 is what we would get from those plates. We're looking to do a transfer and just, you know, give them to the college that they can use them in the Cox Building. That's what we're asking.
If you're open to that, all it would take is a motion, a motion and a second, just to give them, because it's an intergovernmental transfer.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am.
Resolution, acceptance of salt bids, 23-29.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of salt bid, whereas the City of Maysville has advertised for bids for salt, and whereas the City of Maysville wants to award the bid, and whereas the following bids were received, and these are all priced per ton. Number one, Cargill Inc., $108.45 per ton delivered. Two, Compass Minerals America Inc., $109.07 per ton delivered. Three, Morton Salt Inc., $116.34 per ton delivered. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Maysville as follows. Number one, the bid of Cargill Inc. in the sum of $108.45 per ton for salt is hereby accepted on behalf of the City of Maysville. Two, the mayor is hereby authorized and directed forthwith to execute all contractual documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate acceptance of said bid and to consummate the contract on behalf of the City of Maysville.
Thank you. Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing the closure of the Maysville Hotel Group loans, 23-29.
You want to hold on. Don't read that yet.
Sure.
Okay. Penny and I are going to do our best to explain this. Let me get my notes here. So, the ad, the ad district is requesting that the city provide some guidance, in this case, a resolution on the forgiveness of the Maysville Hotel Group loan. We, the ad district, were given verbal guidance several years ago that the loan was to be forgiven after the hotel met the bed tax obligation, but we never received any formal guidance by the city commission. Now, there are two loans here, one in the amount of roughly $211,000, and the other one in the amount of just over $20,000. Penny, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do not have these on our books. Is that correct?
Right.
We do not carry them on our books.
We don't have a liability.
A liability, thank you.
Or a receipt, we actually, we are receipts holder.
Okay.
From them.
We weren't, we weren't-
Where did you get that?
From Amy, from Buffalo Trace. Here.
Okay.
You can see them, sure. Full disclosure, we had nothing to do with this and don't have a lot of knowledge of it. What, about three years ago, we looked into, we did some research and to see what we, go ahead.
We looked to see if we had any liens on the property. There was no lien recorded on the property. We had nothing on our books.
So, this was done by head change? Is that what you're saying?
It's just something that they want cleared out. Right. I mean, I think it was a, an agreement that was, we don't have any record of.
We don't have any record of it, and really, the key here is Buffalo, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Buffalo Trace wants to close this out so that the hotel could be, the hotel can't sell unless this is closed out. I'm not saying it's going to sell, but they could not sell the property unless it's closed out. Is that correct?
So, I want to clear it up a little bit.
Hold on just a minute, Mayor. Commissioner?
Have they met their obligation to be tagged?
Have they met their obligation with Buffalo Trace?
I believe so. Yeah, there hasn't been, from the information we were given, there hasn't been any payments on that since 2009. So, that was saying that that's when they, their obligation was met. The maturity date on that loan paper that they provided us was 2020, and Amy did reach out to us in 2020, then she signed, you know, with COVID on, everything happened. She's just now revisiting, wanted to try to get it off their books before the end of their fiscal year. We don't have anything on our books, so.
Wasn't the original amount around 600,000?
From what I researched three years ago, it was like 550.
Okay.
There was three different loans. I guess the restaurant group loan has, was taken care of. These end up, used to be in the hotel group. So, but we don't have a lien on them, so there's really, it's just kind of an agreement that they can get it off their books.
Mayor?
I just wanted to say that that was a revolving loan fund, that money was supposed to go back in, that then could be loaned to other people for innovative projects or projects like, that we might need, like we needed a hotel at the time. Now, the handshake might have came, all that was out in front, but the handshake might have came later on the forgiveness. That part I don't know about.
Right.
Yeah.
How can we honor, hope to forgive that? I mean, I wasn't part of this.
Yeah, and again, Penny and I weren't either, so.
The taxpayer, they're not on it for anything.
No, you're correct.
It's not in the process anyway.
Right, right.
It's the same fund that we talked about in the budget session about the $50,000 that we put in. That's that fund that keeps, you know, people make payments, it adds to it.
Right.
So, it's just our contribution. I think we, at that time, must have given that fund 500, 550, and then that part was not, was, I guess.
And they've paid half of it back, and we've, and somebody forgave the other half.
Well, I think what, the way I understood it, I'll try to be as brief as I can, that the transit room tax that they created was supposed to offset, offset the amount that they owed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we voted on that.
Okay.
That the commission did at the time.
Okay.
So, did it?
Oh, gosh. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know. I wish I did. And we did. We scoured files.
Jay, do you know?
No.
So, what do you know? I'm sure it's the end of that.
That's all.
You're asking me to vote for something?
She would say, she knows a lot about the transit room tax. She would say yes.
I would say yes.
Yeah, that's all done.
That amount of time, $250,000, yeah.
That's all done in the controller's office.
Yeah.
From 2009, I think.
To now, or to 20, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good. We don't have.
We do not.
It does not, it's not in the process anyway.
They don't owe us, we don't, they don't owe us any money on a note, and we don't hold a mortgage on their property.
Correct.
So, it's just a cleanup.
Is it okay if Kelly reads the resolution?
He's reading.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
Resolution authorizing Buffalo Trace Area Development District to close out Maysville Hotel Group loans that matured December 31, 2020. Be it resolved by the City of Maysville, Kentucky, that the City of Maysville authorizes the Buffalo Trace Area Development District to close out the Maysville Hotel Group loans that matured on December 31, 2020.
It's all up for me to second this.
Commissioner McCutcheon.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
I don't know. So, how are you going to put that down?
I think you got to vote yes or no, for upstate.
Upstate. You're upstate? Okay.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution authorizing service level agreement with Kentucky Interactive LLC, 23-30.
Resolution authorizing service level agreement with Kentucky Interactive LLC, Tyler, Kentucky, for electronic access to governmental information. Be it resolved by the City of Maysville, Kentucky, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the service level agreement with Kentucky Interactive, otherwise known as Tyler, Kentucky, for the provision of electronic access to government information and transactions.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance amending Chapter 150.65 Sewage Connection Charge, first reading 23-05.
An ordinance amending Chapter 150.65 Sewage Connection Charge Summary. This ordinance amends Code of Ordinances, Section 150.65, to change the sewage connection charge from
I'll make that motion. I'll second the discussion.
Sure, go ahead, Dick.
As we discussed about the housing shortage in the single-family dwellings in the future and its part of the comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're involved with the steering committee and stuff, and that is an issue.
What if, what if a young couple was to get their hands on a piece of property and build? Are we going to pay, they have to pay that 900,000, right?
For a one-inch service line.
Yeah.
Excuse me, that's water, never mind. Yes, 900, for the sewer. And then, you know, the next one.
Is covering our costs?
Yeah, right.
I mean, that's, that's not making any profit. That is covering our costs.
I get it. It's just that sometimes I feel it's, we're taking one step forward and a couple steps back. I get it, I get it.
And a lot of times, those, I mean, they've included that in that construction cost with their loan, you know, they use that as a construction draw on their loan.
It's a good one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to put this, the cost of putting a loan.
I mean, the cost varies, but that was an average cost. I mean, that's just covering our costs.
It depends on if you have to do a road board, you know, outside of the street.
If they're within 300 feet, and it's readily accessible per the ordinance that's on the books, they have to make a sewer gap, and that's what that cost is, just to cover our costs to let them connect to our sewer system.
Some are going to cost more.
Yeah. But we haven't updated this since 1997?
Yeah, I think it was on.
One of them was the late 90s, the other one was?
98.
Yeah.
98, sorry.
March 2nd of 98, the last time that's updated.
25 years ago.
Any other comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
I understand it. I don't like it, but I vote yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance amending Chapter 150.63 Water Connection Charge, first reading 23-06.
An ordinance amending Chapter 150.63 Subsection B Water Connection Charge Summary. This ordinance amends Code of Ordinances, Section 150.63 Subsection B, to change water connection charge from $900 to $1,200 for a one-inch service, and from $1,500 to $2,000 for a two-inch service.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Right up in the, yes.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance amending Street Sweeper Schedule, first reading 23-07.
Okay, before I have Kelly read this, we did have some brief discussion in the previous meeting. Do you all want to continue this schedule and writing street sweeper tickets?
I just, I don't know. We've already discussed the, 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 invest and clean. But I just, I like the idea of running it.
Yeah, right. And I clarify, we will run it, but not.
Issue tickets.
Right.
I think if you're just going to block that, you're just.
Okay. If that's the consensus, I'm thinking a motion by them to suspend the current schedule and writing tickets, and then we come back, and what's your, what's your thoughts procedurally on that?
Well, what, what I have tonight, what it accomplishes is it gets our ordinance in conformity with what Assistant Chief Conley's provided to me. Our, what was on our books, our ordinance, was way different from what-
What they're actually doing.
What they're actually doing as far as street sweeping. So, I think I could still read this and at least clean up our books and get in conformity with them.
That's fine. And then, what would be, because essentially, we-
But there is a penalty in here.
Right. Could we just make a motion to suspend?
Actually, I think you can, and that gives the police office.
And I tell you what, if we can do that, how about a motion to suspend it, and then if we ever wanted to come back?
Yeah.
You know, it's not, it's still on the books. Kelly?
Yeah, I agree. Let's, let's pass this, hopefully, and clean up what our books.
And that would make sense.
And this actually does not address-
Penalties.
-penalties or citations.
And then come back.
So, y'all can make a motion and put the police chief on notice that you don't want tickets written after we pass it.
I'm not putting it on notice. It's just a request.
I thought you were looking at me, so.
I think what you do is, you pass this, so we clean the books up, and then you come back with a second motion to suspend the ordinance. That way, if you ever decide to go back, to start it back up, it's clean and we haven't. Does that make sense?
So, if we ever do buy a street sweeper that's clean, it's a beautiful city, and you can start buying tickets, correct?
So to speak.
So to speak.
I can hear the cheers coming from the police department.
And that includes the streets that people wanted us to start.
Correct.
I inserted limestone.
Limestone is on there. And if people still want to abide by this schedule, we'll address that in a minute. Go ahead, Kelly, sorry.
Okay. This is an ordinance amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 257. Summary. This ordinance amends Code of Ordinances, Chapter 257, Schedule 3, Street Sweeping Schedule, to update the schedule in conformity with the schedule maintained by the Maysville Police Department. Quid.
So moved. Seconds.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am.
So now, it would just be a simple motion to suspend-
To suspend citations. Don't say suspend the ordinance.
Yeah, to suspend citations. And again, Commissioner, people can still participate. We would, we would encourage them, if they can, to move their vehicles. They're not required to. This is essentially what this would be. Go ahead.
So moved.
Okay.
Lisa, Facebook says there's no sound.
We're almost done.
Did we get a second?
We got a motion?
All second.
Second by Commissioner Wood.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Close session pursuant to KRS 61.812, where we will add discussion which might lead to the appointment, this one, or dismissal of an individual employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes, ma'am.
And for the record, no action will be taken when we come back in. I just need Mark and Chief Palmer. Come on in. Mike, you just hang this second. Come on in, Mike, just hang a second.
Yeah, I was running up there, I was going to clean my car real quick and then as soon as I get up there, I saw one of them up there, I'm running up there, there you go. I'm going to clean my car. I'm so mad, I have to do that and then. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Back to you, see you tomorrow.
So now your spreadsheet.
I'll tell you what. We have interrupted many times. Just running people's credit cards to pay for tickets. I know you guys get calls all the time. People come in, tell us their sound stories.
I get yelled at, all that kind of stuff. But I mean, I, I agree if it, if it's not, then what it's supposed to be doing.
Ooh, why are we doing that? Yeah. I don't know what happened with that thing. Not only do we apparently not have Facebook sound, but it's not even going to YouTube for some reason.
Uh oh.
Yeah, but what it did. Technology, man, I can only do so many things at one time.
Yes, sir?
Yeah.
How are you?
Sweeping that much? I mean, basically, back then, back in the days of.
Yeah, I'm sure it's right. There's people who do, you see them all the time looking, trying to get rid of the last couple of years. Take care.
Yeah.
He's got two more, three, nine.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it takes a.
Hey, but at least we are good. If I do ever say resume, we're good.
That's true.
Yeah, leave them, yeah. I think if people do want to move, they know.
The public, the public then did come in to play and when I mentioned suspended it in the pandemic, I said, let's start writing more tickets, ask their money and ask their money to, you know, please help us. Most of secondary, they're in these streets, you know, the business district was a little different, they didn't really want to, but it wasn't sweeping in that area. So we have a lot of people that was participating in the sound.
Yeah.
That's why we moved her being.
Hey, I know. They'll be real. Initiative over there, all of them. You all over here? Yeah, you all always, I'm with it too. Just people come in and, hey, I want to.
It's not that if people drop off stuff at the drop box, but if people want to pay with credit card, they all, then it's just.
Yeah, I mean, you think of the man, I mean, I wonder really what is the net of, you know.
Well, if they, if they don't pay, we've got to get it from the initiative, John Esfolds off.
We got to get it moved.
And then get it filed.
And then also we got to.
For you. It was there for us to move it and then we got to go back because they really got it in their hands.
And you know, you don't get 25 dollars if they, if somebody were.
I know.
But they, they know. What is a dollar ticket, I get it.
And actually people are coming to get two or three of them.
I don't know.
I mean, I can understand maybe accidentally to get one, but that would be a lesson, right?
Yeah, you're like, uh-uh. I give my 25 dollars.
Just like the scene, match vehicle, guy, it was a long time.
He was calling someone.
Yeah.
I was down there.
I didn't get them to make the car.
That was the funniest thing, because people are coming, this ticket. And I'm like, well, the city manager got one and he had to pay. So it was.
We got him charged, he's dead, we got him.
I'm just glad I don't have to park on the street anymore.
Yeah, but you're right, I mean, I'm glad, let it be, let it be, we'll see, they'll pick it back up sometime.
Oh, yeah.
Next five years sometime, it'll be.
Well, if they ever can afford it.
Streetsweeper?
I don't see that. City of Lexington, the city of Louisville, city of Lexington takes in about $265,000 a year on street sweeping.
So it's.
City of Orleans takes in $100,000.
You know, Tinesha keeps up with what, we got a lot of other people. Yeah, it's just the truth.
I can't say that.
I don't know what happened, it didn't go to YouTube at all.
I didn't know she didn't hear it at all.
No, yeah, it went to YouTube on the other meeting, I don't know what happened with this one.
Oh.
Can't wait for Lou's.
I need your motion to bring them in by order, please.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you all. Oh, whoops. Thank you, sorry.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Brammer?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Cartmel?
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor Cotterill?
Yes ma'am. No, not yet.
Who's calling you up?
My neighbor. It's all nice, I may not bite.
You may not, just bait it, hey, you contract me out. No, I'm kidding. Who's your neighbor today?
So Ricky Truesdale, Mo's. Ricky Truesdale, Mo's, Caroline's mom.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So he, he got me last week and then my mayor, the hills from out of town.
Oh, yeah, he's got the pool, the pool that's a salva.
Yeah.
We looked at that house.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was like, man, if we lived right here, say, Kelly, I wouldn't get any.
I need some.
Good luck tonight.
See y'all.
Bye, Kelly, thank you, buddy. Okay. Good job.
I guess she was in a hurry.